Thank you very much. Okay, so it's November tenth. We are now meeting as Committee of the Whole. I call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest, bikini area or otherwise? Seeing none, I will again say if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. We have no business arising from the minutes and we have no delegations. And so we're out now dealing with the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled, counsel? And I'm going to ask for a mover to approve the consent agenda moved by councillor Keveney and seconded by councillor McQueen. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We're on to item seven A. Just dealing with the Bill twenty-three, the more homes built faster act and associated consultations. I need a mover to put the item on the floor, moved by councillor Hutchison and seconded by councillor Mackey. I don't know if it's, oh, Scott, I've got Kim and Randy here. Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good, good morning to Warden and County Council. So I've got good news and bad news here for you this morning. The good news is we've only got one report for discussion. The bad news is it's quite a lengthy one, but we'll try to keep this concise and touch on some of the the high points of of the proposed legislation and regulatory changes. For some reason, this slide's not changing. Sorry about that. Okay, so on October twenty-fifth, the province released a number of proposed legislative changes and some other regulatory and guidance document changes. Collectively, sort of under the the guy, under the the name of Bill twenty-three, the more homes built faster act. The report, as I said, is quite lengthy. It touches on a number of pieces of legislation that might most directly impact the County of Gray and our member municipalities, as well as touching on some of those other proposed regulatory changes. There's a number of changes whereby the province is seeking comments by late November on, which is why we put it on on this agenda. And there's some further changes. They're seeking comments by the end of the year on. So there'll be another report at the December eighth meeting of County Council. I will say in preparing this report, it was a team effort. We had staff from a number of different departments, including finance and legal services and planning and the C O and deputy C O all working on this report because it does impact potentially so many of of the county's roles in this regard. We also had some great discussions with member municipal staff and we had a meeting of the municipal planners last week, as well as inviting a few of our conservation authorities. So there's a lot of broad input that's gone into preparing what you see before you today. So with respect to a very general overview, we want to make it clear that the county really wants to work with the province, work with our municipalities and work with the development community to address housing issues in Ontario. Certainly, there's lots of positive changes in in Bill twenty-three, and I certainly don't want to make it sound like county staff are are playing Chicken Little here and the sky is falling. There's some good stuff in here. That said, we believe there are some changes proposed that could have some unintended consequences and and they could end up being problematic to county, to the county municipalities and and the conservation authorities. And and there are some changes there that we think might not have the intended goal of seeing more homes built quicker. We would note that even aside from the proposed changes in the legislation and the regulatory changes, there are existing workforce issues and infrastructure deficit issues that further compound the ability to see more homes built quicker. And and these workforce and infrastructure deficit issues not only affect the county and municipalities, but they also impact those trades that that will be calling upon to build these homes going forward across the province. One of the keys that county staff see here to success will be ensuring that it's not just more homes built quicker, but specifically the right kind and type of homes. And we really want to push for more affordable homes and more attainable homes in this regard because we think that's a key social infrastructure building block to our communities in that regard. So with respect to some of the most notable changes, there's a number of changes to the the Development Charges Act that would impact a county or municipal ability to collect development charges to fund future growth-related costs. Most notably, Bill twenty-three is proposing a series of exemptions which would exempt affordable and attainable housing from from the need to pay development charges. And and certainly that is good in theory, and the county is already conditionally exempting purpose-built rental housing. But with where they've drawn the line in Bill twenty-three to suggest that affordable equals anything at eighty percent or less of average market value, we see some challenges there. And and so if we take a a hypothetical example of an average of a municipality where the average market value is is a million bucks, that would mean that the affordable price is anything eight hundred thousand dollars and less. And so for those units, those ownership units that are eight hundred thousand dollars and yet or less, they would no longer need to to pay development charges. And while that is definitely more affordable than a million dollars, we see a big gap between the 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 income and and housing needs in our community and that eighty percent of market value. So we are asking that the province reconsider this and and maybe look at a slightly different definition there and perhaps a definition that could could tie those values back to income in that regard. We would also note that that the tracking of these exemptions can be quite onerous either on county staff or municipal staff, and it could relate, it could mean the need for increased staffing or 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 more staff time spent there. We are recommending the province that they they consider a standardized process rather than having to go through the agreements registered registered on title process as we do currently. And then finally, I'd note with respect to that eighty percent value, which applies to both market or applies to both ownership and rental housing. The province has noted that they'll be issuing a bulletin on pricing so that municipalities and counties can determine the the full price and then subsequently the eighty percent price. We would simply request to the province that if they are going to be issuing this bulletin, we see great need for it to be granular. So simply issuing a bulletin for for a wide region might be undercounting or overcounting the the price variances across those regions. So even across the County of Gray, we see great difference between our municipalities. And we would also request that that bulletin be issued fairly frequently because over the last number of years, we have seen very big swings in in price differences across the county. With respect to some of the other development charges changes, they're recommending that there be automatic discounts for purpose-built rental units whereby those discounts are graduated. So a one-bedroom unit gets a small discount and a three-bedroom unit would get a greater discount. We are requesting that there should be some more municipal flexibility here based on the fact that in the earlier changes, we're already exempting development charges for purpose-built rentals that are affordable or attainable. So we think there should be some flexibility to allow municipalities to really target where they want to issue some of those discounts. And and maybe municipalities would consider only issuing those discounts in times of great need where you might have very low vacancy rates and and as opposed to just being automatic. There are further changes which look to a reduction in development charges when a municipality passes a new development charges bylaw. So the for the first four years of of that bylaw, those development charges would be phased in. And again, we'd simply flag here that this could mean less D C revenue, even in some cases than your the last year of your former bylaw. There's also further requirements for municipalities to spend or allocate sixty percent of the monies in a development charge reserve fund at the beginning of each year for water supply services, wastewater services and roads. County staff would like to see some clarification here specifically with respect to the term allocate. As council may may know that a lot of development charges are used to to fund bigger projects and they're not something you could spend in a given year. So if you're if you're saving up for for a new wastewater treatment plant or wastewater treatment upgrade, that takes a number of years. And and based on the way development charges are currently structured and the fact that the development charges are based on detailed projects outlined in the development charge background study, we'd really like to push the province to consider what that term allocate means in in this context and how it would be done on an annual basis. We see some merit in in having allocate in there, but certainly spending sixty percent each year would make development charges untenable for a lot of the projects we use them for. And then there's further regulatory changes which would look at ineligible services for development charge collection in that regard. Most notable to the County of Gray is that we'd no longer be able to collect for our own housing services in that regard and or for background studies like a development charge background study in the future. With respect particularly to that, the housing services, we see this as a big impediment to getting future county housing built. The County of Simcoe did some analysis. They estimated over the next ten years, it would be a sixty-eight million dollar hit to their county housing funding in that regard, and that would equate to approximately a three thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollar reduction in a development charge for a single detached dwelling. So I think Simcoe's point in that regard is it will be a nominal decrease in in the development charge for a single detached dwelling, but it will have a major impact on a county's ability to provide county-owned and and run housing in that regard. So our big, our big comment here with respect to development charges is we see great potential for it to impact municipal and county revenue sources in that regard. And if those revenue sources are impacted, it would mean having to put those those fees back on to the general tax levy and or looking at cuts to services or or cuts to some of the growth-related infrastructure that we'd otherwise be looking to fund to support this new housing that the province is is asking us all to support. With respect to some of the changes to the Planning Act, they're looking at limiting third-party appeals to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So this would basically mean that members of the public could no longer appeal on official plans, official plan amendments, zoning amendments, consents, minor variances, et cetera. We see this as 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 a mixed blessing in that regard. Certainly, it may result in in less tribunal hearings. But we do see members of the public and community groups then placing more pressure on municipal staff and municipal councils. In some cases, might even be advocating for municipal councils to refuse files knowing that they don't have that possibility to appeal after the fact. So so we do see this as as a potentially an impediment to our our new municipal councils coming in. You know, just based on getting this level of community pressure, and it could result in further delays at the staff or council level, which again, don't go to that end goal of of getting housing built quicker. They've also introduced as-of-right permissions for up to three residential units per property when you're in a settlementary, per residential property, sorry. When you're in a settlementary that's serviced by municipal water and sewers. Staff are generally supportive of this, but we noted that in in speaking with municipal staff, there will be some implementation hiccups here, particularly as it relates to servicing infrastructure. And certainly for new developments, what we heard from the building officials is it's much much more efficient to install those lines for new construction. But when someone's going into retrofit an existing unit to put in, say, two additional residential units, it can mean that you need to upgrade some of those services. And there can be some added costs there that wouldn't otherwise be foreseen. The province is also looking at making changes to inclusionary zoning and and just for councils refresher, inclusionary zoning is the provincial tool that would allow a municipal municipality or to require X percentage of affordable housing going forward. In this case, county staff are still advocating that the province consider opening up inclusionary zoning powers across the province and that it not be limited to major transit station areas and those municipalities that have a development permit system in place. Other changes which don't impact the county as directly definitely impact your municipal tables with respect to some of the proposed changes to to parkland dedication. This allows developers to identify the land they wish to convey to the municipality for parkland purposes, and it can now be land that's encumbered by easements or other restrictions in that regard. If a municipality refuses to accept what the developer has offered in that regard, it can go to the O L T. And again, we see this as as a challenge because it could result in delays if if municipalities are having to fight these O L T fights in that regard. And it could also mean that municipalities are are feeling pressured to take land that's otherwise not suitable for parks. And I'd say just from a general planning perspective, when we're looking at increased density, when we're looking at more houses and when we're looking at the lessons learned from the pandemic, these outdoor public spaces are really, really crucial to our communities. And we saw that the level of use throughout the pandemic. So we really hope that there'll be some changes proposed here such that municipalities can continue to offer those those quality outdoor spaces that contribute to the quality of life of our communities. There's other changes proposed that would designate the the regions across the the province as well as Simcoe County as upper tiers without any planning responsibilities. So this would remove their their development approvals. This would remove their official plans. County staff have have spoken to to some others across the province, and and I think the recommendation here from from planners anyway is that the province consider revising this and and perhaps it's not the removal of upper-tier planning responsibilities, but maybe a limitation on upper-tier planning responsibilities. Certainly, across Gray County, we see the ability for greater streamlining, even though we're not one of the upper tiers that's being impacted at this time. There's there's certainly things on on the development approval side that we can work to streamline with our member municipalities. We've got a local planners' meeting scheduled for next next Friday to discuss some of those streamlined options. But we do still see an upper-tier role for the regions and for Simcoe County when it comes to things like growth management and things such as natural heritage system planning, which really do cross municipal boundaries and make more sense arguably at a regional or county scale than it would having each municipality operate like an island in that regard. There's some further changes to site plan control that would exempt any new residential development of ten units or less from needing site plan control. There's some changes with respect to land lease developments and further changes that limit municipalities' ability to apply site plan control to architectural or sustainable design details. Certainly, in our conversations with municipal planners, they did see some challenges here. And and particularly at the county level, the the limitations on sustainable design details greatly impact a municipality's ability to implement a climate change mitigation or adaptation strategy. And the county was looking at developing some green development standards, and and we see this as potentially a barrier to implementing those standards in that regard. With respect to some of the Conservation Authority Act changes, the province is further focusing the conservation authority's role purely on natural hazard planning. And so conservation authorities will no longer be able to comment on natural heritage for development proposals and applications. We see this as a major impact to a number of of rural counties and municipalities across the province because by and large, counties and municipalities don't have a biologist or a college on staff that would have this expertise. So it would mean that places like the County of Gray or some of our member municipalities might need to hire additional staff with this expertise. Certainly, in speaking with our four conservation authorities across Gray, you know, they've noted that that currently natural heritage planning is is largely done across thirty-six conservation authorities in the province. And and having that shift to four hundred and forty-four municipalities could result in less efficient services and and more delays in that regard. Certainly, the other thing we'd point out is that natural heritage and natural hazard planning are not mutually exclusive. So if you have a conservation authority planner going out to a site to to investigate the natural hazard, looking at wetlands, and then you have a county or municipal planner or a college just going out to that same site to look at natural natural heritage, then we we see the potential for duplication and delays there. So what the message we're advocating for here is that the province should consider allowing the current system to continue whereby natural hazards are mandatory services for our conservation authorities. Natural heritage are optional services where municipality has entered into a memorandum of understanding with the conservation authority. The message that that county staff and conservation authorities would put out there is there's no nobody forcing anybody to sign one of these non-mandatory M O Us. So if you've determined across your county or your municipality that you would like the conservation authorities to provide these services, then then they should still be allowed to provide those services. There's further changes which also exempt conservation authority permits where there's already been a planning application. We see this as additional burden on municipalities that then are required to implement what otherwise would have been in that conservation authority permit. And some municipalities may not be equipped to take that on, or it might mean more staffing. The idea of further freezing conservation authority fees could result in greater municipal levy requests for funding their operations and staff and or it could result in in slower service delivery from our conservation authority planners on development projects in that regard. And overall, I think the message we've heard from a number of our conservation authorities is that that they request that the province re-initiate the multi-sector working group that was set up earlier in the the term of the forward government to look at changes to the conservation authorities. We heard a lot of good comments about the work that that multi-sector group was doing. And and there's the thought that these changes should be run through that group before before consideration of passing. With respect to some of the other changes, there's some further changes to the Ontario Land Tribunal, which I think county staff are generally in support of. There could be increased cost to a party that loses at a hearing. We would like some clarification on on what that means in that regard. There's increased authority to dismiss an appeal, and there's increased ability for the attorney general to prioritize the scheduling of hearings. And so if we're reading between the lines on on the government's initiatives in that regard, that prioritization of scheduling would probably be for high-priority housing projects over over some other projects in that regard. There are some changes proposed to the municipal act that we have concerns with with respect to limiting a municipality's ability to pass a bylaw that regulates the conversion or demolishing of rental units. Certainly, we see rental as a key component of our housing continuum going forward. And particularly if if there's further thought that some of these rental units will be converted either to condominium-style ownership or converted to short-term accommodations. We think municipalities need to remain in control there. There's some changes to the Ontario Heritage Act that don't directly impact the County of Gray, but a number of our member municipalities have spoken out on with respect to the criteria for listing a property and some new imposed timeframes in that regard. And then finally, there's some changes to the proposed Ontario Wetland Evaluation System that would further delete the conservation authorities on-the-ground role in that regard. And it would allow wetlands to be assessed in isolation rather than as part of a greater wetland con complex. We see both conservation authorities and and our wetlands as as being absolutely crucial going forward to to strategies for climate change mitigation and adaptation. And if anything, we need to be doing more to protect them, not potentially opening them up to to further challenge in that regard. So with respect to some of the next steps, there are committee meetings being held before the standing committee right now, though they're asking for comments or oral deputations to the committee by November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The E R O postings, for the most part, are generally due by November twenty-fourth. And as I said, there's further proposed reviews of the provincial policy statement, The Place to Grow, which is due by the end of the year, and that'll be another staff report to committee in on December the eighth. So just to conclude here, we really want to work with the province to look at further opportunities to streamline our processes to get more housing built. We applaud the province for for taking action in this regard, and we want to work to hopefully help refine some of the changes in Bill twenty-three, but also to to look forward and and see more housing being built in that regard. We do see some of these proposed changes as as being either administratively burdensome for municipalities or financially burdensome, which could impact a municipality's ability to plan for and provide the infrastructure needed to support this this growth going forward. We're also worried that some of the proposed changes might see more housing being built, but it might not necessarily be the type of housing we need across our community. And so we're really trying to advocate for any solutions that that would result in more affordable housing and more attainable housing in this regard and seeking to see a change in that definition to affordable housing such that it's not just eighty percent of market value. So with that, there's a rather wordy recommendation that recommends council receive this report that we forward on the comments to both the province through the E R O postings and also to the standing committee and that this report be shared with municipalities and conservation authorities and that we proceed with forwarding these documents ahead of the December eighth County Council in order to meet the province's timelines in that regard. With that, I will turn it over to any questions. Thank you.
Wow, well done. Well done. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and Scott, thank you very much for the detailed report and presentation. Very much appreciated. So my comments and my question is in relation to paragraph three of the recommendation. So I know firsthand how effective and important it is to be a delegation in front of the provincial standing committees. In fact, I was delegation for the Standing Committee on Finance. So with that, in paragraph three, it talks about sending the the written comments to the Standing Committee on Heritage, Infrastructure and Cultural Policy. Is there an opportunity for a delegation, whether it's through electronic means or in person, to actually be a delegation in front of the Standing Committee to articulate the the findings and the comments and the recommendations of this report, recognizing the success and that I experienced? And I'm just imparting that here to Gray County. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Counsel Robinson, and and through you, Mr. Warden. So staff were maybe perhaps a little presumptive in this regard. We have requested a deputation before the standing committee. The deadline for putting in those deputation requests was yesterday. So so we have put that in. We suspect there's going to be a number of people requesting such deputations. So we're not we're not counting our chickens that we will actually get that deputation. But we thought at the minimum, we could we could put in the request, and then if council didn't see fit to move forward with such a deputation, we could always withdraw our request. I know the town of Blue Mountains was nice enough to invite us to a meeting yesterday, which included two local M P Ps. And I believe the town also announced that they're they're submitting a deputation request as well. So hopefully some voices will be heard from from this area, and and our two M P Ps were very receptive to to the comments that were being put forward by the town and the county there.
Thank you for the follow-up on that. And I'm wondering, Mr. Warden, is there a need to amend the motion to include approval or permission or support from Gray County Council for staff and whoever else that is necessary to be a delegation in front of the Standing Committee? Thank you.
My apologies. It seems to be covered by the recommendations already before you, counselor.
Thank you.
Counsel Silver.
Yes, thank you, Scott, for for the presentation. There's certainly a lot to cover there. And I want to thank Scott and Randy and Kim for coming to our meeting with the two M P Ps yesterday. You know, this bill puts the burden of the attainable housing on the local municipalities' taxpayer. And we did point out to the to the M P Ps, you know, that this is not making any housing any more affordable. For instance, in the town of Blue Mountains, if we lose thirty percent of our tax revenue because of exemptions, I mean, our thirty percent of our D C revenue due to exemptions, that would be three point six million dollars a year. And if we made that up through taxation, that would be a twenty percent increase in taxes roughly. So, you know, maybe the capital cost of the house goes down if, and it's a big if, if the developer passes on that D C relief to the buyer. I suspect it'll probably go to profit, but if that happens and taxes are twenty percent higher year every year, it's just moving something from capital to operating. And so it doesn't make housing any more affordable. What it does is it just moves the, you know, part of the purchase price if the developer passes it on to taxes that the owner would pay every year. And so what we've suggested is why don't you look to where the money really is? I mean, in the town of Blue Mountains, we collect eighteen million dollars of property tax a year. But the housing market in the Blue Mountains, last year, we sold four hundred, four hundred houses at somewhere between one point two and one point five million dollars each. So that's somewhere between four hundred and eighty to six hundred million dollars. So one of the things that we're suggesting is if you're going to give D C relief to some types of housing, then you should be allowed to calculate your D Cs by using when you do your D C buy study, not the total growth, but the D C eligible growth only. So basically, if your growth is ten thousand units, but thirty percent of them are not D C eligible anymore under this bill, you would only be dividing the capital by seven thousand units. So if we did that in the Blue Mountains, that would increase D Cs on an on a single-family home by about twelve thousand dollars, which amounts to, you know, when it's a one point five million dollar house, that's less than one percent of the cost of the house. So it doesn't really move the needle for the high-end buyer. But certainly, I don't think it's feasible to finance this D C release through taxation because it's not really doing anything for affordability. So we're going to speak to that when we go down if we get selected. We've got a number of applications then from a number of different groups, including our attainable housing corporation. So maybe one of us will sneak through the filter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Thanks very much, Scott. Uh, early on in your presentation, you talked about the as-of-right permissions in the residential areas. Is there anything in Bill twenty-three speaking about rural lots and the as-of-right permissions there?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Counsel Mackey, for your questions through, Mr. Warden. Uh, so Bill twenty-three specifically introduces a new definition to the Planning Act, which which uh essentially speaks to a a a piece of residential land in an herbous, in an urban service settlement area. Uh, so one of the things that we've put in the report that I neglected to say in in my presentation is we'd like some clarification from the province to to uh maybe not necessarily allow for as-of-right, but still allow the municipalities uh the ability to have the autonomy to um allow for such units in our our smaller settlement areas, so our villages and and our our towns that don't have full municipal services, as well as in our rural areas. Uh, we have seen uptake on this over the years. In some cases, some municipalities permit it as of right. Other municipalities require a zoning amendment. Uh, but we have seen a a number of additional residential units uh proposed in in privately serviced communities. And so just very briefly, sorry, I believe at the beginning of the presentation, I neglected to also thank Mary Lou and her team. Uh, certainly, understanding the finance ramifications of the proposed changes has been very important, and they've been very helpful there as well. So I apologize. Hopefully, that answers your question, but if not, I'm happy to address it further.
I don't see any other hand, so perhaps it's time to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, Scott. Okay, we are now on item number eight, and I'm going to be looking for a mover um to move us into closed session to deal with the litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative administrative, excuse me, tribunals. Uh, mover moved by Counsel Patterson, seconded by Counselor Gamble. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. So we'll just take a sec. My apologies. I understand that members are interested in taking a break, so it's now, uh, why don't we come back at eleven fifteen? Okay, we'll take a sh- a break till eleven fifteen. We're now dealing with other business, and I know that people wanted to make uh uh certain remarks. Uh, so I'll entertain uh persons wanting to speak now. Uh, Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and uh on behalf of uh Counselor Woodbury, he asked me to his extend his thanks uh to staff, county staff, and the rest of the council. Unfortunately, he had to leave on short notice. But uh, he he asked me to do that, and uh I I echo his uh his sentiments as as well. Uh, the other thing I want to note or note and announce is that I will be seeking the Warden's chair on December sixth, and I would appreciate uh your kind consideration for that endeavor on my behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, and Counselor O'Leary, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, last meeting, I'd like to thank all my colleagues for your friendship for the last four years. Uh, very much appreciated. I also want to thank thank the most important people in the corporation, our staff. So to senior directors and managers and all your staff, thanks for what you do. Um, Kim Wingrove, you are the reason staff is so well respected. Your your leadership skills are through the roof, and thanks very much. Um, Mr. Warden, thanks for your leadership and friendship. Very much appreciated. All the best in the future. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Counsel Robinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would first like to to thank all of Gray County staff uh for their professionalism, their talent, their dedication and commitment to helping uh Gray County Council in our governance leadership role. Your your talent, uh, you're you're talented, you're very smart people, and I very much appreciated working with Mr. Warden, thanks for your leadership and friendship, very much appreciated. All the best in the future. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Counselor Robinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would first like to thank all of Gray County staff for their professionalism, their talent, their dedication and commitment to helping Gray County Council in our governance leadership role. Your talent, you're talented, you're very smart people, and I very much appreciated working with you these past four years with the committees that I was involved with and ultimately to County Council for the support of the work of staff and committees. I thank you very much. It was my honor and my privilege and my pleasure, certainly, serving as a county counselor for the past four years. If I look back on the tangibles and the accomplishments of this council, there are many, and they stretch across the entire responsibility of this county council. And I'm very pleased that we've been able to improve the quality of life of our Gray County residents, our business owners, the industries, the the people that are just coming to Gray County for relaxation and tourism. We've done a lot and I very much appreciate, I very much appreciate that I was a part of that civic responsibility and duty is incredibly important to me. I wish the incoming county council the very best luck, the very best success in the four years. And I'll see you in four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Counselor Columbus.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone, and this is going to be ditto. As we leave, I've had eight years around this table and I can't tell you how impressed I have been with the level of expertise, professionalism, camaraderie, friendships that have been formed. The work that has been done is so worthwhile and so important to the health and welfare of all of our residents in Gray County, and that begins with our leadership. So to you, Mr. Warden, and to you, Kim, for your leadership at the staff level and at the council level. You're so impressive and it has just been a joy and a pleasure to work with you and with all of my colleagues around the table. It is going to be a very, very exciting next four years coming up with all of the growth that's happening in our community. The tough decisions I know that we're all going to be making at the local level. It is going to, the learning and the relationships that have been formed, I think, around this table are going to strengthen the work that is being done at the local levels as well. And the the interaction between our staffs and as well as the collegial interactions around the table. I wish everyone the best of luck in the next four years and thank you all for your friendship and your guidances. I've moved through this and learned so much, particularly to our staff, that I've had the pleasure of working with someone individually. It has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Columbus. Counselor Gamble.
In reply to Mayor Columbus has said, I get my tongue twister out of here. Yeah, it's all ditto. This is a great organization. You should be very proud of it. I've learned a lot in the time I've been here. The staff is just tremendous. You hear other municipalities talking about, you know, this and that, that doesn't go well. That doesn't seem to happen here. If it is, they're keeping it pretty hidden, but no. The council people have been great, other than the little bit of bittering that goes back and forth here that starts us off every time with a laugh. Anyway, it's been a great time on. I've really enjoyed it and I wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you. Also, decide.
I could say ditto, keep this short, but when was the last time I did that? That's some self-deprecating humor, cancer mode. So one last time, Warden Hicks, I got to address this council from this side of the horse sheet. I might get emotional, so bear with me, or don't. I still have the floor. Thank you to all my colleagues around this table. It has been my honor to serve with all of you. A special thanks especially to my members opposite, counselors Mel and O'Leary. It would have been hard to survive a few events without the two of you there. Gentlemen, we've made memories. This term, Warden Hicks, we were faced with some tough decisions from Greg Abels to navigating the COVID-19 pandemic, but we stood up when it mattered and debated our points and made some tough choices. Leaders are characterized by their ability to make tough choices. And I'm proud that we were unafraid in the face of these tough choices. However, tough decisions come with the harder task of implementing these decisions. So to staff, thank you. Your support over to me over this term of council has been invaluable. I will treasure our conversations and our banter. And in the new role that I will now be dedicating all my energies to, I'm sure our paths will cross again. Scott, I want you to know that I leave this job knowing that I will never have to worry about what time I take lunch on Thursdays anymore. I also want to express sincere gratitude to the staff at Southgate. Without their support and their understanding, it would have been very hard for me to fulfill my duties at this council or my duties as a politician over the past year. As I reflect on my time at this table, I see that I have a lot to be proud of, Warden Hicks. I'm proud that I had the gumption to take unpopular stands and to face the consequences that came with them. I'm proud that I made every decision, took every stand with unfailing integrity and with the best interests of this county in mind. I'm also proud that I had the opportunity to use this platform to speak about the mental health of elected officials. This job can be thankless as much as it can be rewarding. You can go from being the hero to being the public enemy overnight. Trust me, I would know. This can extract a significant toll on your mental health. And I'm proud that this council, as well as several lower tier councils, have passed resolutions to include elected officials on their employee assistance program. I hope this will encourage elected officials to speak up and reach out for help rather than suffer in silence. I've heard comments from several people over this past election that we need better people in local government. At the end of the day, if we want better people in local government, we have to be better to the people in local government. To the next council, I wish you all the successes you strive for. However, you too will be faced with some tough decisions. Make the tough choice. It will hurt. But if you don't make the tough choices now, future generations will have to make even tougher ones. And I look forward to all the great things you will accomplish. In closing, Warden Hicks, these four years would not have been possible without the assistance of so many wonderful people. And I'm grateful for each and every one of them. Thank you. Oh, before, before I leave, if there's anything anyone remembers from these four years that I've been here, let it be this. I'm Batman.
Many memories indeed. Okay, so. Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just wanted to take a minute on behalf of myself, but on the behalf of the whole senior management team to thank you all for your collaboration, for your consideration. This has been really an incredible, a remarkable four years. Many of you went through, you know, personal things. And yet, your strength and your resilience and your willingness to show up at this table and to be kind and considerate and thoughtful to all of us is really, truly to be celebrated. We as staff are so grateful to have the quality of counsel that we've had through this four years. It's really been really wonderful. And when you think back to the report that we brought at the end of September about the strategic plan that outlined all of the work that we've been able to accomplish in this term on top of dealing with a pandemic, there's so much to be proud of there, and that's because of you and your willingness to work with us as staff and to move things forward. I feel very, very blessed. I think all of the senior team does, and I just want to say a huge thank you to each and every one of you. To those of you who won't be coming back next term, you will be missed. You have each played such an important part around this table. So thank you so much. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim. So we will turn to some presentations that we want to make.
So at this point, is this on? Are we good, Rob? Yes, okay. At this point, as we mark the end of the term, it's in some of our, as I mentioned, some of our members are not returning. We wanted to acknowledge the service of those who won't be coming back and by presenting the Gray County pin to each of you, and it's my honor to be able to present the pin to Warden Hicks. And Warden Hicks was elected to Hanover Council in 2006 and became part of County Council back in 2014. He's held the Warden's position through 2019 and 2021, as well as serving on the Board of Health, the Economic Development and Planning Committee, the Committee of Management for Long-Term Care and the Redevelopment Task Force, Mental Health and Addictions Task Force, among others. He's also been the Chair of the Hanover Owen Sound Task Force, the CAO Committee, Health Funding Task Force, and Affordable Housing Task Force. All of that, in addition to carrying on your regular professional duties, it's really been an incredible amount of service. We are so grateful to you and it's an honor to present you with this Gray County pin, and thank you so much.
I get the pleasure of presenting others. Alrighty then. Counselor Gamble. Counselor Gamble has served on County Council for four years and represented Gray County on stewardship Gray Bruce and has participated on the Forest Management Advisory Committee and the Climate Change Task Force. Perhaps I can put this down. Counselor Desai. And the crowds go crazy, right? Counselor Desai took a seat. Yes. Order, please, order. Counselor Desai took a seat on Gray County Council in 2018 as Deputy Mayor of Gray Highlands. He has participated on the Economic Development Planning Advisory Committee, Gray County Federation of Agriculture, the Climate Change Task Force, the CAO Performance Evaluation Committee, the Hanover Owen Sound Task Force, and the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy, and has been a member of the Good Roads Board. Thank you. Counselor Columbus. Counselor Columbus was elected to Gray County Council in 2014 and has contributed through the Tourism Advisory Committee, the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee, the Healthcare Funding Task Force, the Mental Health and Addictions Task Force, and the Committee of Management. You're next. Counselor O'Leary. Counselor O'Leary has been should be expecting that, right? Counselor O'Leary has been on the Gray County Council since 2018 and has shared, chaired, excuse me, the Mental Health and Addictions Task Force and Hanover Owen Sound Task Force. He's also participated on the Committee of Management, the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Task Force, the Affordable Housing Task Force, the Board of Health, and the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy. Last on my, sorry, the last on my list is Counselor Woodbury who had to leave, but I would still like to read off his piece if I could. Counselor Woodbury was a member of the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee, Committee of Management, the Affordable Housing Task Force, the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Task Force, the Mental Health and Addictions Task Force, among others. Am I getting this right? No. Start over. Counselor Woodbury took a seat at Gray County Council in 2018. He has held appointments on the Committee of Management, the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee. He participated with the Climate Change Task Force, the Development Changes Steering Committee, and the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Thank you. Counselor Soever. Counselor Soever was elected to Gray County Council in 2018 and has held the position of Chair on the Development Charges Steering Committee. He has also served on the Affordable Housing Task Force and the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Robinson joined County Council in 2018. She has held positions on the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Committee of Management, the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Task Force, and the Gray County Federation of Agriculture. I should apologize, although he is not here today. I should acknowledge Counselor Dwight Burley. Counselor Dwight Burley has spent a total of 16 years on Gray County Council, beginning in 2006. He has been a part of the Social Services Committee, the Gray County Accessibility Advisory Committee, the Building Task Force, the Committee of Management, the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force, and the Affordable Housing Task Force, and has either been Chair or Vice Chair on each of those committees. He's also participated on the Mental Health and Addictions Task Force, and we thank him for his 16 years of service around this horseshoe. I appear a little flustered, it's only because I am. So we'll turn next to the Warden's closing address. On December 4th, 2018, which is exactly three years, 11 months, and six days ago, the members around this horseshoe were sworn into office by Her Honor Justice Morno. Little did we know that one year later, we would be faced with an unprecedented healthcare challenge that would rock the world. In my 2022 inaugural address, I told you that I wanted us to be remembered, not for what we faced, but for our relentless commitment to achieve results for the people of Gray County, in spite of what we faced. That said, I would like to take a moment to reflect on some of our accomplishments over the last year. In long-term care, thanks to the Redevelopment Committee, we made great strides with the Rockwood Redevelopment Project. This included a decision by council to include assisted living beds in the build. Staff continued to manage outbreaks while protecting residents. We celebrated the opening of the new nursing wing at Georgian College, which will pump much-needed homegrown nurses into our healthcare system. You'll recall that Gray County contributed $1 million to this important initiative to reinforce our longstanding partnership with Georgian College, as well as our commitment to addressing the nursing shortage in a meaningful way. We continue to look for ways to support our long-term care staff, including vacation and well-being initiatives. Turning to planning, in planning, we kicked off the OPA-11 process with public meetings in February. Council also approved the Age-Friendly Community Strategy and Action Plan. Turning next to climate action, Gray County approved its first-ever climate change action plan. Going green and gray. That, my friends, is cause for applause. Credit goes to our climate change task force and our deputy warden for suggesting creation of that task force. We joined the Clean Air Partnership and began planting trees towards our commitment of 1 million trees by 2030. We adopted a Green Fleet strategy with recommendations for preparing for battery electric vehicle implementation over the next 15 years. And lastly, we commenced naturalization of the Gray County Administration Office property, which you all see as you drive in, as a positive step towards our tree planting goals of going green and gray. It was so much fun to attend that event, where young and old worked together to plant trees. My daughter Chloe has claimed several of the trees outside that she helped plant, and she's claimed them as hers. In my 2022 inaugural speech, I called for action on mental health and addictions. And thanks to you, a Mental Health and Addictions Task Force was formed in February of 2022. The task force received a number of community delegations from organizations such as the CMHA, Keystone Youth and Family Services, the Gray Bruce Poverty Task Force, the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy, our Public Health Unit, and the Blue Water and Catholic District School Boards. I learned a lot from this committee. I want to thank the members of the task force, especially the Chair, Counselor O'Leary, who pushed us to find tangible ways to move the dial on mental health and addictions. And I'm confident that great things will come from the final report of this task force. Turning next to COVID-19, our emergency declaration was terminated on March 14th, 2022, just a few days shy of the two-year anniversary of the initial declaration. Turning next to paramedic services, our paramedics were heavily involved in this supportive outreach project, bringing care to the most at-risk individuals in our community. We also completed a 10-year service deployment review. In economic development, we co-hosted and organized three regional job fairs throughout the area. We also developed a foreign direct investment strategy, our summer company program for young entrepreneurs, and the starter company and digital Main Street program for small businesses were provided through the BEC. We saw a return of Ag 4.0 technology in agricultural conference. We also saw enhanced Gray Transit Route, the GTR service levels, and experienced exceptional increase in ridership, 240% increase. Lastly, the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership, GB Lip, welcomed, celebrated Welcome Week and other community events. Next, highlighting our transportation department. Think back to late February 2022, specifically the Family Day weekend, where our transportation team was operating through a significant multi-day storm that saw heavy accumulation and several prolonged road closures. We completed seven resurfacing projects on Gray Roads 2, 31, 13, 15, 10, 8, and 9. In other areas, we developed a four-year corporate communication strategy to grow and improve Gray County's internal and external communication efforts through to 2026. Gray Roots saw a return to general events and exhibits, and council elected to enhance 35.5 kilometers of the CP Rail Trail, improving the surface, excuse me, and making it more enjoyable and accessible to various trail users in Southern Gray County. We also approved the updated asset management plan to ensure our $1.6 billion in assets are well-managed. Turning now to social services and housing. Our Gray County team supported the evacuation of residents following a fire at a rooming house in Hanover. Gray County moved emergency shelter services in-house for enhanced efficiency. We implemented the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Program. And lastly, we purchased a property on 14th Street in Owen Sound for the creation of supportive housing, and renovations are well underway. So there you have it. Let there be no doubt that Gray County is making headway on multiple projects that go directly to improving the quality of life of our residents. I want to thank our senior management team. I said it last year, and I'll say it again this year. You showed incredible resilience and grit in the face of adversity. I thank you, and this council thanks you for your leadership, professionalism, and commitment to people. A special thank you goes out to our past clerk Heather and our current clerk Tara. Folks, how often have you seen me consulting our clerks? They're the absolute best. They research and prepare for every possibility at council meetings, and no matter how much you tested them, and you did, they always came up with the right answer. I want to acknowledge my speechwriters, Katrina, Philly, and Rob. They always delivered under the tightest of deadlines. Thank you. I think they will appreciate me mentioning that while the speeches were their words, the horrible dad jokes were all mine. During my three terms as warden, I was assisted by two amazing women, Penny and Kayla. Just imagine the challenge of trying to coordinate the schedule of a working lawyer, whose schedule you don't get to fully know because of client confidentiality, along with a warden's schedule. Penny and Kayla had to work with my law office staff to keep me on track. It didn't always work, but it was never their fault. True story, by the way. Kayla was making phone calls on my behalf from her hospital bed on the day of the delivery of her last child. Talk about commitment to your job. Penny never once said no, or I can't do that. Instead, she frequently said, let me take care of that for you. And then there are individuals who do little things that make a big difference. People like Olivia, with her words of encouragement. Sharon, who has no problem whatsoever cutting me up. Kath, with her smile and a joker too. And Monica, who would smile and say bling bling each time I walked past her desk wearing my chain of office. I want to thank our CIO, Kim Wingrove. It is no exaggeration to say that Kim is one of the very best CAOs in the province. She is a leader in her field, who is respected by her peers. She is a leader who mentors and lifts others. She is smart, strategic, and capable of carrying a very heavy load. Most of all, she's compassionate, always looking out for others. Kim, it was an absolute pleasure working with you. I learned from you, and Gray County is very lucky to have you for as long as we can convince you to stay. Thank you. Are you gonna make me cry? I don't cry a lot. I want to give a shout out to retired MPP Bill Walker, who set aside political difference to do the work with Warden Jackson and myself that was necessary during the pandemic. Thanks also goes to our MP Alex Ruff, who made time to meet with me each quarter and allowed me to control that agenda. Our new MPP Rick Byers tells me that as a new MPP, he feels like he's drinking from a fire hose. Rick has been humble and inquisitive. I think those qualities will serve him very well in his new role. I want to thank our medical officer of health, Dr. Era. I should refer to him as Professor Era, because he taught me so much. I will never forget the conversations that we had all hours of the day and night during the pandemic. Funny thing, I thought I was special, having had those countless conversations with Dr. Era, until I found out that many others had the same experience with Dr. Era during the pandemic. Thank you, Dr. Era. County Council, I want to thank you. I can go around this horseshoe and confidently point to each and every one of you and say that you care. Of course, we have political, ideological, and perhaps philosophical differences. However, what binds us is a profound sense of duty, service, and a desire to make a difference. County Council, over the last four years, you have indeed made a difference. Our community is a better place because of you, and for that, I thank you. I want to single out one member around this horseshoe, and that is my mayor, her worship, Sue Patterson. Sue, you made it possible for me to serve as warden by lightening my load at the lower tier. During our first term on county council, we often drove to meetings together, sometimes in nasty weather. I enjoyed our conversations, and it covered a multitude of subjects. We became good friends, and you were someone I could go to for support, ideas, or just as a sounding board. I'm gonna miss working with you, but I know that we'll continue to be friends. Thank you, Sue. I've saved the most important person for last. My best friend and wife, Barbara. Being the spouse or partner of an elected representative can be challenging. It's hard to read a social media post or an email slamming someone that you love. It's hard to have your business partner off doing other things while you pick up the slack. Barb, I know that there were times when you could tell that my head was in a different place during family time. You supported me, you lifted me, you loved me, and you allowed me to go on this crazy journey of political life for 16 years. And for that, Barb, I love you. I'd like to conclude by saying what an absolute privilege and honor it was to serve as your warden. It is an experience I will never forget. You elected the county's first visible minority warden in her 170-year history. We had challenging times. There were many difficult and close decisions. There were a few occasions when I had to call and offer, shall I say, some gentle warden counsel. You were always respectful, understanding, and professional. I thank you for that. You answered my call each and every time I put a challenge to you. I thank you for that. I want to finish with a line that I used in my very first speech to you on December 4th, 2018. And of course, it's from that Canadian rock band Rush. And it goes, "And the men who hold high places must be the ones who start to mold a new reality closer to the heart." Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. So I'm now looking for a motion to adopt the Warden's address. Moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Motion to adjourn moved by Counselor O'Leary and seconded by Counselor Mackey. He beat you. Do we keep sitting here if I don't call the question? All those in favor? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Ask Carrie, thank you very much, over and out.